All right, welcome back as we continue on with our city council work session, which is also a joint county work session. We already had a tour of the prison and we called to order item one aboard the tour vehicle. And item two, I'm required to read this, so I'll read you about the tour of the MSP site that pursuant to 610.020.4 of the revised statutes of Missouri, this portion of the meeting is being held at a place that is not reasonably accessible to the public for good cause, being that it is highly beneficial for council members to learn about and directly familiarize themselves with the condition and extent of the property that the city is in the process of acquiring. This portion of the meeting will be devoted to fact finding of the council and no decision or votes of the council will be made during this portion of the meeting. So we are glad to be back. We've returned a little bit longer than expected, so thank you for your patience. We had a great tour. And why don't we start our slideshow at the beginning here? I'm going to run through kind of a quick virtual tour to point out where we were on the site for those of you that could not be with us. And while we're here tonight, I did want to point out, we already called roll aboard the bus. We have all of our council members present, but we also have County Commissioner Jeff Helsher and Commissioner Chris Shepperali here, so welcome. Glad to have you all here. They were on the tour as well, along with State Representative Mike Bernscker. So it's an honor to have all of you here and appreciate it. So especially Mr. Bernscker, all of the work that you did for this bill in the House, and we greatly appreciate it. So thank you for being here. So we will run through the slides here, and I know Clayton's in the back there. So is this the first one? Okay. And this just shows some of the area in the upper yard, and we can kind of flip through just so people can see. We've had this running through while you all were in here earlier. This is again in the upper yard area and housing units. This particular one is Chestnut Street, so you will see that MSP Parkway on the master plan as we look through it, the proposed road, is this road here. So this shows you, it's a gravel portion of Chestnut. And the next slide there is the State Health Lab, so that is one of the properties that's on there. And then this shows, if you look where that light pole is, you can see the penitentiary. This is on the very eastern edge at the Lewis and Clark building, or DNR building. And next slide, this is coming back. This is coming back from Lafayette. And straight ahead, on the bottom right, you can see the Lafayette interchange. And so when you are at the corner of the prison, you can see how close that Lafayette interchange is to allow access and open up access to the site. And on the left, you see the Convention and Visitors Bureau's office, which also holds the new State Penitentiary Museum. Next slide. And then this is coming in through the parking lot. This is part of the area to be acquired. It's currently, as you can see, parking. And then on the left is the historic area. Next slide. This is coming up Lafayette Street on the right. This is Housing Unit One. This is what you typically see when you come down Lafayette. Next slide. And then the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And this is after you exit the upper yard, the historic upper yard, this is kind of the line of the area to be conveyed. So when you see that on the map, you'll know what we're talking about. Next slide. And we're kind of going backwards, but this is as if you were going to the upper yard. So it's kind of right on the edge of the property. Next slide. And again, kind of coming from the river. This is as if we had already gone down Chestnut to the river. And you turn around, on your right-hand side is the river, and you can see the train there. And then behind you is the yellow house, which is the Shoe Factory. So when you see that on the map, you'll know what we're talking about. Next slide. And this is looking to your right. This would be the river, right behind the railroad tracks. And this is a view of the parking lot in the area to be acquired. And this is the opening off of Chestnut Street that we drove through. You can see the historic properties on the left. So if we were to look on this map, that is Chestnut. So the area to be acquired is Chestnut to the historic property on the East and West. Next slide. And then on the North and South, it would be Capitol Avenue to the river. And this is a view of the river from Lafayette. And that is MSP Parkway in the future. It's the gravel road of Chestnut Street towards the river. And that's in the upper yard. And the Lewis and Clark Office Building. There are two state office buildings on the site, and we showed you the two. And this is a view of the area to be acquired to the river. And then on the edge, this is the Lewis and Clark Building. And this leads up to the upper yard. Next slide. And again, a shot from the upper yard. And more from the upper yard. This is the historic area. And more in the historic area. And the other housing units. And this is part of the area to be acquired to the east of those historic areas. And Lafayette with the federal courthouse on the right. And this is a view from the eastern edge, looking at MSP. And to the very right, you can see the brick from the Potato House. Somebody asked earlier where the Potato House is. That is the underground Potato House there, which is not on the area to be acquired. And Lafayette. And I think that should wrap it up, just about. More historic areas. So that is kind of a virtual tour of the area that we took. And I will be sure to blog all of these photos on mayorTurgent.blogspot tonight, so that the public can see those. If they were not able to come to the tour, they can see that. So what we'd like to do this evening is have an overview of the master plan. We're going to spend about 10 minutes going over that, and then we're going to go over the legislation that we presented to the House and Senate and have an overview of that. So I'd like to invite to the podium Mayor John Landwear, who we appreciate his involvement. I know he was mayor when a lot of this happened and was discussed earlier. I'd also like to invite Councilman Schreiber, who is very involved in the tours and history. And we also have Mr. Randy Allen from the Chamber here as well. So if those three would like to come forward to the podium, and I believe Mark and John are going to give us a presentation of just an overview of the master plan. So I will turn it over to you.
Actually, probably the best person to do that would be Randy, since he was actually involved from the very beginning. John and I were on the first redevelopment commission, MSP Redevelopment Commission, which was a nine-person commission, three members in the chair from the state, three members from the County of Cole, and three members from the City of Jefferson. So Randy, why don't you come up and start it off, since you were involved even before we got involved, so?
Well, just briefly, when Governor Carnahan decided that he wanted to replace the penitentiary because of it was aging and the employee count was getting too high over there and so on, we began the process of what do we do with the old facility? And so, as Mark said, a redevelopment commission was put into legislation along with the transfer of property to that. I believe that happened in 2002, I'm sorry, 1998. And after that point, the commission did the work and developed with a consultant the master plan for redevelopment. So is that really what you wanted me to talk about? Okay.
Well, of course, we're standing on the shoulders of 10 years of inaction right now. The original game plan for the prison redevelopment commission, and the statute is still in place, where this commission was to take the process outside of the, outside of politics, and have a commission take title to the property and redevelop it. And for whatever reason, water under the bridge, that did not occur. So here we are today. We have no active prison redevelopment commission. However, we have an administration which apparently is ready to move forward, and we have representatives who are willing to help us move forward. So we've not wasted 10 years, but we've waited 10 years. And we're kind of like the dog that caught the car. So what do we do now, right? That's the question.
In front of you, you can see that you have a history of the MSP development. And whenever we said that, you know, in some ways it was a long process, a 10-year process, there was a lot going on with the commission and with working with Randy Allen initially and other people from the Office of Administration and from Facilities Management. And so there's a whole stack and a whole file of various drawings and formatted books with diagrams and information. One of the first things that we actually did is we had a charrette. And charrette was, we did it over at the Truman Building. It was one of the most enjoyable things that I'd done in a long time. And there were various architects and individuals that came from all over, not just around this area, but from other areas in the United States as well. And there actually were various teams that were put together, and these teams came up with various design concepts that might be possible for the MSP property. And I can tell you, and I think John and Randy will agree, that those architects were very excited about the potential possibilities. They said that we had one of the most beautiful vistas of a river, basically unspoiled. One of the things that they told us to do at that particular time, they said, you know, whatever you do, don't put big high rises along that vista so that it's totally, totally ruined as far as the view that you have of the Missouri River. We also had an actual task force, which was made up not just members of the MSP Redevelopment Commission, but the task force was made up of citizens from around the City of Jefferson. And there were business leaders and some government leaders. There were private citizens, people that were involved in various aspects of our community. And they also had input. And so one of the first things that was done is that we actually did tours of the prison site, and determinations were made as to what would make up the historic quadrant. And we actually did surveys, and we made a determination. We viewed every single building in the prison, including all those buildings which now no longer exist. And a determination was made as to the historic value of the buildings and the historic value of the property itself and an actual assessment. And so when the historic quadrant was finally developed, as you see it right now, that was the end result. We knew the whole prison was historical, the entire prison. And at one time, it consisted of 52 buildings and almost 2 million square foot of building space. But we knew that it would be absolutely impossible to shrink wrap the prison. That just wasn't possible. So we had to kind of pick and choose our, make a determination on which buildings would be the most historic. And those are the ones that have been retained and are still existing upon the property. The factory buildings, quite honestly, were just basically shells. All of the equipment, we moved out to the new prison, or it was surplus. So there was really nothing to see in any of the factory buildings. But you can see in front of you the timeline that was actually involved. We still have a lot of those documents, if any of you would care to look at them. And we even got later on into issues like, well, what kind of park benches would you put there? What would you do with the lighting? What kind of historical lighting would you put inside the Missouri State Penitentiary? What kinds of materials would you use? What type of water features might you have? And so it was broken down so that you had various sections and various quadrants throughout the entire site that could possibly be used. And another thing that was done, and this was when Randy was over at Facilities Management, they did a lot of core studies, core sampling. That was actually done inside the wall and other places, because we didn't know what kinds of materials might turn up from years ago, whenever that site was used for various industrial purposes. And basically, the site turned up very well. It turned up clean. So that was a very positive thing. So those are some of the things that were done. It wasn't like that we just sat there and nothing was accomplished. We had Parsons and Associates out of St. Louis. We had some groups from Kansas City and different areas as well. And they were very helpful in contributing to this process. So the great thing about the master plan is the master plan, I feel, is still applicable. The master plan has room, and it was intended from the very beginning to be a plan that could be tweaked and changed so that it would fit in with whatever we felt the need might be at whatever time we decided to develop or the state decided to develop a property. And so when you go out later on, if you haven't already, you can take a look at some of the display boards out here on the easels, and those are some of the design concepts. And nothing's etched in stone there. But one thing is certain, we knew that the MSP Parkway, at some point in time, would have to be an important first piece in that puzzle. Because any developer, whatever that might be in the future, or whoever does the development, they are actually going to have to have points of ingress and egress into the site. And so, you know, I encourage you, I've got a lot of that material, and I'll be glad to let you look at it or turn it over to the mayor or city administrator, and I'd be glad to let you look at it at any time. But it was a very involved process and a very, much of a learning process.
You know, certainly if there are any questions, you know, for us just chime in. Mark talked about the master plan, and it did involve a lot of work. And the good news is, a lot of the master plan is implemented. You have to kind of take credit for what we've already accomplished. The federal courthouse, I remember some meetings, and that came very close to being in Columbia. That's hard to believe. But the federal courthouse is here, and it's a beautiful site. The architects for the federal courthouse specifically designed the federal courthouse to fit into that prison redevelopment entrance. The historic area was touch and go when the State of Missouri was reluctant to make long-term commitments. You can put a big check mark by that, because now there's, I think, a 15-year lease to the City of Jefferson, and there have been cooperative projects to ensure that the roofs are intact. And the CVB and Diane Gillespie's here, the success of the prison, of the historical quadrant is, you can put a big check mark by that. I want to step back a little bit. Do we have a picture of the master plan or not? Are we going to go through the master plan? Carrie, it's up to you what the agenda is. I don't want to, I don't want to get too philosophical here.
Sure, and we certainly can. It's on page 12 of this presentation, so if you want to pull that, Clayton can just keep flipping through till we find that, and that way it's on here. Keep going. One more, one more. There it is.
So I think the idea of this proposed transfer at whatever time is that it does not involve the historic area, of course. That's subject to that commitment to preserve it, potentially down the road, make portions of it available for redevelopment. But right now, it's kind of on ice and subject to the great work of the CVB. The State of Missouri, I don't know if we're ever going to build another state office building in Jefferson City, but I hope we do. But OA rightfully wants to make sure that they don't transfer land, and yet, down the road, oh, we need a new state office building. And where are we going to build it? And we've got to go buy land. So they, very popularly saying, you know, we're going to hang on to some parcels. And so that's to the east there, okay? So the area we're talking about is the area that Governor Nixon, I remember the press conference over at the Capitol, everybody was popping the champagne corks. This is the area that was designated during the Nixon administration for private development. And so really, what we're talking about here today is not some recent creation. It's really been on the table for a long time. Any questions on that, or any other comments, guys?
We are very fortunate at this point in time to have such a great team from the community, to have Councilman Schreiber as part of our city council at this time that we're looking at prison redevelopment. What a wealth of knowledge and information. Same with you, Randy Allen, being the chair of the Chamber and having such great involvement from the master plan to your Chamber background. We're very fortunate to have you. And Mayor Landwear, I almost envisioned you sitting here in the seat. And it's almost like, you don't anymore, but like, time has almost stood still, like, all of a sudden, here we are, like, almost what you had the conversation when you were mayor, and we're just picking up now almost where you left off.
And I won't belabor the point you all need to discuss, and if you have questions, obviously, but I feel like I need to leave you with a couple of thoughts. This is not just a feel-good project. This is not, you know, I remember when we wanted to do a pedestrian bicycle access across the bridge. You know, sometimes you get a little heat because, well, why are we spending tax dollars on that, right? Well, I think that's a really great use of tax dollars, but this is not just a feel-good project. This is a large volume of acres in the central core of your city, of my city. And we have to, we have to be very careful with that, and we have to be guardians of it, and make sure that it just doesn't remain this vacant, dilapidated hulk, which is what it will remain if we don't proceed. But I've mentioned some of the positive things that are already in place, the courthouse, the historic area. It's a big project. It is bigger than any, it is bigger and more complicated, I would wager, than anything that a city council has ever encountered, in terms of scope, in terms of complexity. It is big, and it's complicated. I think Randy would verify that, and he may want to add his comments. I was talking to a client, a real estate developer in St. Louis, and I had him take a look at it, and he said, oh, my God. Okay. So this is big and it's complicated. And so therefore, I turned 65 this year, okay? So I get to give you advice, right? See, I'm an old guy. Be patient. Be patient. Go slow. Go slow. I know sometimes we want to just get it done. That doesn't mean don't do anything for five years, but be patient, go slow. Talk a lot. Talk a lot among yourselves. Have a lot of meetings. Have a lot of discussions. Keep all your key players involved. And finally, get good advice. I might offend some people by this statement, but I'm going to say it anyway. There is nobody in this room tonight, and I don't think there's anybody at City Hall that has the expertise to guide you and advise you in this project. It's just too big. It's too big, and it's too complicated. We have architects, we have attorneys, we have planners. Sorry, guys, it's too big and too complicated. So I would urge you, in the course of your patience and your work on the project, to bring on expertise of firms and persons that are used to projects of this scale. I think if you attempt to predict what will work, you stand a chance of being wrong. And that would be a tragedy. There's expertise out there. There are firms and individuals who have dealt with projects of this scope, and I would encourage you to look to them. And it's not me, by the way. I'm not trying to get hired. So think about that. Those are sobering words. Hope I didn't offend anybody in the room, but I firmly believe that. Questions or further comments?
Does council have any comments? Our commissioners, Bernscker, and we would prefer if you all would stay here so that as we go through it, questions that may arise. And Councilman Fitzwater?
I just had a question in regards to Union--
One moment, before Representative Bernscker leaves, I know you had a prior commitment. I hate to interrupt there, Fitzwater, but did you have anything you wanted to add? I know you were very much a champion of this bill, and so we want to publicly thank you for your support.
I'm not 65, but I would reiterate--
And you can, if you want to speak into the mic to--
I'm not quite 65, but I would reiterate what the mayor said, to take you all's time on this project. And one thing that a lot of the members up at the House said was, they were concerned that the state was going to turn the property over to the city, and the city was going to make a lot of money off this property, which I don't think it's going to be a money-making project. But if there is some way of making money off this project, I would recommend that you all put the money back into the rest of the site, you know, develop more streets or more infrastructure or something. You know, I don't know how we're going to develop the property, but I would caution you to not make money on it. But like I said, I don't think it's going to be a money-making project, but if some way there was, I wouldn't recommend that. I would recommend developing the site further, give it back to the state somehow, do something like that. But yeah, I do have to go.
That's great advice. Appreciate that. That's what we currently do with the tour revenue. All the tour revenue goes back into the site as well, so something similar to that. Any questions for Representative Bernscker before he has to go? And thank you for being here. Appreciate your support. And Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just had a question. I assume Union Pacific has an agreement with the state now. Would that be the same with the city, with their tracks cutting through the property?
Yes, and that's something that I know we've worked with staff when we did the outline, I believe Mr. Marash, his department, as we had that right-of-way area that needed to be conveyed. And there's also some other portions, such as Lafayette. So do you have any comments on that?
Of course, we have CNPS here, did a lot of the titling and whatnot, but I think there are some titling issues, it's fair to say, whether it's with the state itself and/or the railroad.
All right. Thank you. And on that note, too, I'll go over this, what we presented to the House and Senate, and then we will also be followed by, we'll have a brief presentation by Diane Gillespie to talk about tourism on the site, and then also Paul Sampson is here from Central Missouri Professional Services to give us a brief update. So before I get started, are any other further questions on the master plan or anything else? All right. And you all have in front of you this, what we presented for Senate Bill 486, which was passed by the House and Senate. If you don't have it, it is available online. And is it on our website, Phyllis, yet? Or it, okay, this will be put on our website then. But we do have it on the overhead, so everybody in the room can see this. And as you look through the first page or two here, it does touch on a lot of the history that was brought up earlier. So that is something important to share about when the task force was formed and some of the state offices that were built. And as you kind of look through this timeline, you'll see that it's something that we've really waited for since 1836, when the prison was built. So the prison first opened in 1836, and it's been vacant now for 13 years. So when we look at what's happened in 13 years, this is something really that our community has waited for all that time, very patiently for. So you can see when the federal courthouse was completed, before that, when the tours began in 2009, under a very successful agreement with the state and the city. So all these things, like Mayor Landwear mentioned, have gotten us to this point. So turning the page then to the, some of the activities, the concerts and venues, using the prison as an entertainment venue. We have on the screen our first-ever concert inside the walls, featuring Travis Tritt last year. It was very successful, for a first-time-ever event. That was held in the upper yard. And this year, it will be Wynona Judd on July 1st. So we're bringing a big-name entertainment and using this as an entertainment venue. The upper yard, who would have ever dreamed that the upper yard is set up perfectly for entertainment? So that was definitely a big success for our community. The next slide shows our tours, and Diane will touch on this. But the fact that if you look at the first line, tours have grown from 3,000 to over 33,000. So from 2009 to 2016, those numbers are exponential. And also, on the previous slide, it mentions how Alcatraz draws 1.3 million, and how some of the others, Eastern State and Pennsylvania, Diane will touch on some of the activities that they do there. And also knowing that we're the only city in the country that has a historic retired prison and a capital and a river, and all of those things in close proximity, but we are the only city in the country that has those three things, so we're very well positioned. The next page does show the MSP, the, if you look on the right-hand side, the museum visitors. In just four years, visitors to the museum have gone from 752 to almost 7,000 visitors. So we're talking exponential growth in just four years. The reason they have jumped so exponentially was the move to the prison area. The MSP museum was moved from the corner of High and Jefferson over to the new offices of the CVB, right there next to the prison. So you can see what that's done. And at the bottom, you can see a $3 million impact. And also, it shows we've had visitors from 45 states and 43 countries, just in the short amount of years that the tours have been offered since 2009. And if you look there-- And if you look there at the list of some of the outstanding area developments that we've had, the courthouse, which was very important. We cannot underestimate the Lafayette Street interchange that would not have been built if not for prison redevelopment. Of course, it's also opened access to Lincoln University and the entire east end of town has really been revitalized with Lafayette Street interchange. But that was built with the vision of prison redevelopment. And Capitol Avenue redevelopment, there's some substantial investments being made from the city at this time for Capitol Avenue. We have streetscape improvements that are, this is in the design phase. Actually, it's in the construction phase now, if you've gone down Capitol Avenue. And we're also working on the Capitol Avenue area, some of the houses, and working with the Housing Authority to revitalize that entire area. I mentioned the move of the CVB headquarters to the Marmaduke House and other entertainment venues such as the Avenue HQ and some others that were completed in 2015. And we have actually the proprietor of both of them, Holly and Q, are here, Quentin. We appreciate your investment in the area, along with many others. And there's also been proposed lofts in that area, too, for, for future development. The next page shows the area proposed transfer in, in red. So you can see the area on the site. This is as it looks today, where the area that's in the, in the red area is mainly parking. You can see the remnants and outline of an old baseball field that once was on the site. And then the old shoe factory is the only building in the area of proposed conveyance. If you look in the middle of the site, there is the gas chamber, and that is proposed to stay where it is. So we would have an easement with the state. There would be no building, of course, done in that area. And the master plan also shows it on there, so that would be an area of easement. Chestnut Street, as you can see the line in blue, that is a proposed MSP Parkway shown on the master plan. So we're showing an outline of where the potential road would go and eventually looping all the way over to connect with Lafayette Street in the future. But the historic quadrangle remains as it is, and the area in red is the proposed transfer. And then the area to the east would remain state-owned. The next slide just shows it, a little more black and white, so you can clearly see the lines of conveyance. And then underneath, in black and white, it shows the master plan. The next page gives you the acreage, so you can really see that out of this 128 acres, the city is asking for about 31.8 acres, and a lot of that is right-of-way. So really, about 20 acres, 19.7 is the area for proposed development. The next page we looked at earlier, which is the MSP master plan. And there are proposed uses for that. As you can see, the building in the middle on the master plan was proposed to be a conference center, perhaps a civic center. The other areas there were looked at to be hotels. If you look at the top of the page, there's a proposed marina. So those areas are not labeled, as you can see. They're on the map, but there is some flexibility. But we do want to adhere to what the state originally wanted in their master plan, but using it as a guide, because some of those items would need to be updated. But certainly, that is what was originally on the master plan. And then you see the shoe factory, which we have in our area of conveyance as well. There was not residential plan in the original master plan, but with time, it's noted that that would be a good use to have mixed use in this area. This also would open up future development for the state's buildings, as well as the MSP Parkway were to grow and expand. And not shown on the map, but at the very right-hand side of the page, to the very east, is Riverside Park. So there are parks and trails that lead right into the site. And there's a lot of opportunity for recreation and sports to be built into this. And also, when you think about riverfront development, this area of land, you can start to see it there on the very left-hand side of the screen. That's the area of land that's known as Adrian's Island, that runs all the way to the capital. So that actually ties in, if people want to know how large that piece of land in. It starts at the capital and ends up at the prison. So there's even proposed river access there in the future. The last page shows potential uses for the redevelopment, hotels, entertainment, dining, retail housing, lofts, apartments, and office space. So we really foresee this as an area of wonderful mixed uses. So that was the presentation, kind of in a nutshell, that was given to the House and Senate. They both voted to approve. So at this time, for Senate Bill 486, we are awaiting the governor's signature. And the city is in discussions with the Office of Administration on what the MOU would look like, that memorandum, memorandum of understanding, and getting some of the details worked out to include things such as a timeline and other details. But in general, what you see here is what, what would be included. So with that, I would like to ask Diane Gillespie to come to the podium. And while she's coming up, are there any questions of council up to this point? All right, we'll have Diane, if you want to touch on the tourism aspect.
Sure. Thank you for the invite. As Mayor mentioned earlier, we started the tours in 2009. And at that time, the agreement that the CVB had, or the city had with the state was based on a nine-year time period. So we would get the use for April, for March through November. And sometimes it was November or December of that year, as to whether we would have tours for the following year. So for marketing purposes and going out and selling the tours, made it very difficult. Well, when 2013 came around and we had the problems with MSP, we had a partnership between the city and the state that did come together and did the repair work at MSP. But included in that, we were able to secure a 15-year use agreement. So that was huge for us, to be able to move forward with our marketing and the booking of that facility. So then you really kind of saw the numbers continue to grow. The numbers are continuing to grow. As part of that use agreement, any net profit that we make off the tours, the money has to go back into projects of preservation at MSP. So for 2016, we spent over $100,000 on preservation work. So as we move through this year, we'll be looking at what projects need to be worked. Included in that, we had new lights put into Housing Unit 4. We repaired the column on Housing Unit 3 and did some other repair works around there. So those will continue to go as we move forward. We also, out of those profits, we do pay for all of our operational expenses over there. That include, we do pay our tour guides, which make us unique in that our tour guides are former people that have worked at MSP. So they have the history, but they also have their own personal stories, which make the tours unique. We also have the other operational insurance expenses running. We pay for the heating and that type of expenses over there. So one other topic that the mayor did touch on was Eastern State Penitentiary. So if you guys want to go in and do some looking around, check that site out. It's in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And it's kind of one of those sites that we kind of use as our guidelines. We kind of look at what's going on there, how do we compare with, with their pricing and the events that they do there. The biggest event that they have there is that they have a big haunted house event that starts in September and runs through the end of October. They also do some corporate events and parties. And their museum is actually housed right there on the prison grounds. So next, in July, I'm going to be out in that area. So I do plan to go there and actually do a site visit of that prison and kind of see what's going on there and kind of see where we fit into it. So after that, I'd be glad to come back and report to you as to my findings at that site. So any questions from our side of it?
Questions for Diane? Well, we appreciate what you do for the city that raises a lot of revenue and tourism. And appreciate you taking such good care and having such a great relationship with the city and the state to make those tours happen. And that exponential growth is just really incredible. On our CVB commission, Councilman Mahalovich is our liaison as well.
Yes, yes. And we do have a good working relationship with OA. You know, anytime that we have a situation happening over there, we had water in Housing Unit 1 when we had all those rains about a month ago. And therefore, we knew that we had the roofs repaired there, so we did reach out to OA, and they had them come out and repair those last week. So, you know, we are in constant communication with OA. So I think that gives OA kind of a feel for what our relationship, working relationship is as we move forward with any other projects.
And that's something else to note. You're doing these tours with very little infrastructure. If people, hopefully, you've been on a tour. If you haven't, encourage you to go.
Please let me know.
But looking at possible redevelopment will help to bring some infrastructures to the site. There is not running water. They use portable toilets, so it's not-
Yeah, you know, you look at the next level that we can go with that site. And let's face it, guys, we have porta-potties. And to be able to have wedding receptions there, to have corporate events, you got porta-potties. So, you know, and, and we've kind of looked at what our alternative is, but waiting to see where the development goes and if we can tag onto that. Do we build a separate site that just has the restroom facilities? We do not have any running water. You know, the electrical is kind of iffy in some of the buildings. So to be able to kind of step it up, those are things that we would need to take, to take a look at as we move forward with, with the revenue that we do generate.
And you did say wedding receptions, and if you look at Eastern State, they do weddings there. And who would have thought that the things they do at the prison are not making that up?
We have so many calls that want to do wedding receptions. We've had proposals at the gas chamber, go figure, you know, so-
Anybody looking for any ideas out there?
It's out there, and people are definitely interested in the site. We have a lot of travel writers that come in and view it, and we have a lot of film inquiries, so-
Who would have thought?
Who would have thought? Exactly.
Yes, and I think that kind of summarizes everything about this site. Who would have thought this area that's kind of been hidden away all these years and suddenly is coming back to life in the way that it is now? And that many thousands of people are paying to go see it. So thank you, Mrs. Gillespie. And I'd also like to invite Mr. Paul Sampson from Central Missouri Professional Services. As you know, the city council last fall unanimously supported a bill to begin preliminary engineering on the site, which was definitely a great investment, so that we could get ahead of, of this process and know that once we did get approval of this, from the state, we would be able to begin some, some construction and work quicker than waiting to do the engineering later. So I believe that was October when that bill was a resolution.
Yeah, I was just looking through the file folder as I was sitting over there, and that was in October of, of last year that the preliminary engineering contract was signed with us. Since that time, we've been spending a lot of time helping city staff and folks over at the legislature and getting all the documentation that they need in order to put the conveyance bills together, writing legal descriptions. So we know exactly, you know, when, when the conveyance goes into a piece of legislation, whatever description is in that legislation is what gets conveyed. So we did quite a bit of work on getting a legal description for that property written out. A lot of it includes some housekeeping issues that have kind of been floating around for, for several years. Some of the right-of-way on Lafayette Street extension is still currently owned by the state. So that would clean up that piece of right-of-way. Councilman Fitzwater had asked about the Union Pacific right-of-way. According to our deed research, Union Pacific doesn't hold title to the property where their railroad track sits, but there's actually an easement, which is a little bit unusual. Union Pacific also owns a couple of small tracks within the prison property itself. So at some point, we're going to have to do some horse trading, I think, in order to help clean up some of those title issues. We've also been, we did a aerial topography survey and aerial photography of the MSP property. So we've got updated topographical information and things like that to start working on the preliminary designs on. And then we've taken at least an initial look at some of the grades of the streets and, you know, what, how the streets will interact with the adjacent buildings, especially between the shoe factory and Housing Unit 5, or the MSP Parkway would come in off of Lafayette Street. So we've done just a little bit of initial work on that. We've been kind of sitting back the last few months, waiting to see how the conveyance bill works out before we get too far, diving too far into the, into the design work. But, you know, that looks like it's starting to come towards its finality. Hopefully, then we'll proceed farther on that.
Great. Well, I'll leave you at the podium here as we start some discussion and some questions. And then we may have some of the other presenters come up as well, because that, that's most of our, our presentation. And we mentioned that you did a lot of the surveying for the, the bill. It's Senate Bill 486, so if anybody wanted to, you know, reference that, and you'll see, I think most of it is just simply pages of, of the place on the map where the, the land is. And it's pretty simple. It just talks about having the portion of the land conveyed to the city of Jefferson, and that those terms would be worked out with the Office of Administration, the Commissioner of Administration, which is what you're helping us work on. And to put it very simply, in exchange for conveyance, the, the agreement is that the city would, would begin to build the road known as MSP Parkway on the master plan. And that would be a joint city and county partnership that would be built using, could be used, sales tax, joint sales tax funds that we have slated for economic development. So it'd be a great economic development project. I know it's very common in some big projects like this, where the city would, would look at building a road into an area for future development. And this, as we've learned tonight, would be a great area for future development. So that's where the city-county partnership would come in. So to put it very simply, in exchange for conveyance of the land between the city and the state, that the city and county would move forward and help to, to build the road. And then that would help to spur the development. So there will be other details, of course. I'm putting it very simply. And then those are things that, as we get into future meetings, we'll discuss, your preliminary engineering, MSP Parkway, those kind of details.
Right. One thing I might mention, as far as the timeframe and, and schedule on the conveyance bills, and we've done a couple of these where we've had to go through the legislature, legislature to get a conveyance. Assuming that the governor signs the bill, the legislation doesn't actually take effect until the end of August. Once that legislation takes effect, it takes some time for Office of Administration to actually do the paperwork and, and come up with an agreement with the city on the, kind of the fine points of, of how the conveyance will take place. And then, you know, so it could be as late as September or October, probably, I'm guessing, on when the city would actually get a deed for the property.
And then council then would start to also have discussions, along with the county and, and other partners, as we talked about, the CVB, the Chamber of City and State, as we begin to look at a master developer that would look at the site as a whole and bring in the expertise, like Mayor Landwarr mentioned, that would be needed to move forward with some future development of the site. And, and something else is, that is key, is using the master plan as a guide and that that would still remain in effect as, as a guide for this. And I do also want to make sure that, that we thank Senator Kehoe for his support of Senate Bill 486. I know he worked very hard on, on the support and moving that forward. And we would certainly not be here if it wasn't for, for his efforts. And we also had our state rep, Mike Burn Skatter, and also Jay Barnes, State Representative Barnes, and State Representative Fitzwater. They were also involved. Fitzwater and Burn Skatter were cosponsors of the bill in the House. And Jay Barnes also was very vocally supportive when it was debated on the floor. So to say all of that, it's a very exciting time for us as a city, for us to be seated here as council members, as members of the commission, and just to be a part of this, to, to see where it is now. I know there's some skepticism naturally, and sometimes when we talk about this topic, just because we've always tried to make progress, it's been 13 years vacant. And we've had a lot of small wins along the way, like our tours and other things. But we've, we've never been as far as we are now. We've never had the success of having a bill for conveyance pass the House and Senate and just to be awaiting the governor's signature now. So what an exciting time for all of us to be working on this great project. So, you know, the point of tonight was to kind of give an overview for us. And also, it's been recorded, so that the public can also view where we are with prison redevelopment and where we're going. And as we wrap it up, I would, we'll open it up to questions of council or comments. And we have our experts here in the room as well that would be happy to come up and answer. And the commissioners as well to join in. Councilman Graham?
I just have one question. I know you talked about the MSP Parkway. And in the community, I've heard several different numbers. Do we have an estimated cost on the, on the Parkway? I've heard anywhere from $2 million to $8 million, and certainly that is a wide range, so-
Sure.
Do we have an estimated cost on that?
It is a range, and we know that we have in our joint city-county sales tax, the number that we would estimate would be around $2 million to be spent. And as you could see, on MSP Parkway, it's, it can be quite vast on the map. So it depends if you're talking, you know, a certain portion or the entire part. And, and a lot of that would probably make more sense for future development. As was mentioned earlier, there is no state development on part of the site. But in the future, certainly, it would be something that would be looked at to be phased in. And I would expect that our Central Missouri Professional Services may give us some phases. I think that's what you're looking at now, is kind of giving us different phased-in numbers and information.
Yeah, at this point, you know, a lot of the property where the street would go, MSP Parkway, Chestnut Street extension, and then all the way up to the DNR Green Building and back over by the International Shoe Factory, you know, that, those were the main corridors of roadways that are going to be constructed. You know, the kind of- You know, the, kind of the devil's in the details, I think, as we start with the negotiations with the state on the conveyance bill as to, you know, what they expect to be constructed, what the size and scope of those roads are. The master plan, if I remember, I'd envisioned a, kind of a boulevard-type road. I think it's similar to what's in front of Coles and Stone Ridge Parkway in that area. Different groups that have met and discussed it over the years, I don't think anybody really believes that that's the scope of the road that would go through there. So I think there's a, and I think that's the reason for the, kind of the wide range in numbers that are thrown around is that we really don't know the details of what we're talking about yet. So until those details kind of get ironed out, we'll, you know, we've just kind of got that range in there, so.
But certainly the $2 million joint city-county funds would certainly get what we need to begin the development and to entice developers and get the road started into that area.
So is that $2 million from city, $2 million from county, or is it a million apiece?
It's a million apiece. It would be the joint. The joint economic development has $2 million in it.
Okay.
Commissioner Shepherdley?
So Paul, are we talking about just the roads or are we talking about all the utilities and everything else that would go in to support the development?
I mean, obviously, the utilities are going to be a big piece of that. Typically, on a large-scale development like that, whenever there's a imminent use, the utility companies will do a lot of the extensions at no cost, anticipating that additional future revenue. Again, I think, you know, once a developer is selected and there's a plan on, you know, exactly where the road would be and exactly what kind of services need to be provided for those specific sites, I think we can get into a little bit more detail on that.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Just had a question. I assume you've done some preliminary look at the site. Any surprises to date or any areas that look like they may be bigger problem areas than what was anticipated so far?
You know, I don't think so. Really, the biggest challenge I see, and it's really just because of a tight corridor is between Housing Unit 5 and the shoe factory. The M S P Parkway basically will come off of the end of the Lafayette Street cul-de-sac and then go east between those two buildings. And I don't remember exactly what the distance is, but it's a fairly narrow corridor between those. So I think just a little bit of care has to be taken on making sure that those buildings still have access and are usable to the greatest extent possible while that road kind of bisects the two. If I remember from the master plan, Housing Unit 5 is really not, is anticipated more to be accessed off of the historic side of the prison to the south of Housing Unit 5, whereas the shoe factory would be accessed either off of M S P Parkway or even off to the north on the lower yard side.
Would that cul-de-sac be rebuilt then?
Whenever we, CNPS actually did the design on the Lafayette Street extension for the federal courthouse, where the master plan showed that cul-de-sac, I think where the cul-de-sac is now is probably 100 to 150 feet short of what the master plan envisioned. And if you look at the topography of that, I mean, it's pretty evident why. I think once we get onto it, it would be extremely costly in order to try to extend that another 100 to 150 feet where the master plan envisioned it. So I see that as one of those locations where there'll be a, potentially a slight deviation from what was in the plan. But I think we would try to use the existing cul-de-sac as much as possible.
And that's shown somewhat on the map where M S P Parkway was thought of versus what's in reality because the master plan was done really almost, you know, before the street was built too. So there's some variation. But like you said, you've come up with some preliminary ideas and thoughts of how that can be addressed that would also work without having to reconstruct the cul-de-sac. Councilman Mahalovich?
So my understanding is that the conveyance of the property, given the governor's signature, is contingent on our investment in this Parkway.
I don't know that it's so much a contingent upon, but that's the anticipation that the state has is that if the city gets the property, that the city is not just going to sit on it and let it sit there for another 13 years, that the city plans to move forward and bring development to the project. I don't think the state probably cares one way or the other who builds the road, whether it's the state or whether it's the city, county, or a private developer. That's just part, you know, that's part of their master plan and they expect that to be done. I don't think that they will specifically say, we're going to give you this in exchange for X number of dollars to build the road.
So the engineering work we assigned to you, you're going to yield what? At the end, you're going to give us a plan for how much this Parkway is going to cost, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I mean, we anticipate that as we, you know, as the city gets the deed for the property and starts to look for developers, that the roadway design and development will design will kind of happen simultaneously and make sure everything works together.
More questions or comments, discussion? And then I know we have, Commissioner Shepherdley?
Does the Parkway have to go in like it's shown on the master plan or would it be possible for it to deviate depending on the developer that comes in to develop the property?
I think that it would be able to be deviated from. I think the, as long as the intent is maintained as far as a connection from Lafayette Street and a connection to Chestnut and a potential future extension to the D N R Green Building. I think as long as those three pieces are maintained and whatever design is brought forward, I think that would be suitable to the state. One thing I might mention is that as we go through this design process, you know, it's our intention to keep Office of Administration, you know, make them a partner in this process as well. You know, once the city gets the deed for the property, it's not our intent to shut out O A since it's not on their property anymore, but we want them to be a partner in the process and since they do still maintain the majority of the property on the property.
And it wouldn't necessarily be one and the other, like two separate things, having a developer and building the road. Those things may be happening likely close to the same time where there could be some, you know, involvement from the developer as well as this is happening. Because we look at, as soon as we would get the conveyance, that the ball has already started rolling by having the preliminary engineering so that we should be able to act in a manner that would allow some input and the timeline hopefully would be moving at a rapid pace to where we could actually get, I mean, we want to take it slow and take our time, but also keep it moving so that we could find those pieces to work together. And we also have city staff here. I know they've worked, the departments from city staff have worked on this as well, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Marash. So if there's, you know, anything to add and if any of our presenters tonight thought of anything else, you know, to add to the discussion tonight. And it's great to have members of the public here as well. So hopefully being on the site was helpful for council. We've never done that before, but this is unlike any other project we've done before. So it was nice to actually get out and see it. I know a lot of us might have had tours there, but when you start thinking of looking at a map and actually visualizing where this is and what it is in proximity to and how it all interconnects, the historic portion, the portion that we would like to see conveyed to the city, and then the state's future area of growth, and then the park area at the end and the river, kind of how all of those areas fit in together is good to see it. And it really gets you, you know, realizing what the potential is. So there will be a lot more meetings to come in the future. So any closing comments, remarks, questions? I also want to thank our county commissioners for being here. And Commissioner Bushman, who had planned to come here, he had, something came up, he was not able to attend at the last minute. Otherwise, we appreciate the support of our three commissioners. And we heard from Shepherdley. Mr. Helscher, do you have anything to add tonight? Okay. Thank you for being here and yes.
Like for the two commissioners and the council members, I've got a handout for you with my thanks to Diane Gillespie who assisted me with it. So I've got something I want you to have before you leave tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Schreiber, and for being our tour guide and really the tour guide to the community as well. So we hope for the governor's approval as we get close to that. And we'll certainly keep council and the commission and the community apprised of the future exciting developments for prison redevelopment. Very excited to be here talking about it tonight and have a work session to begin that discussion. So at this point, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? Okay, before they leave, you've been called out for a picture. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.